Welcome everyone to our council meeting. We'll, could we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in desolate with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Kate. Here. Here. Okay. Here. All right, thank you. Okay, just got a couple of things to mention here, a couple of proclamations. The first one is Sally Aleandri, she was the president of the, I think they had a meeting tonight, or I know they were presenting it to her, she couldn't make it here, but on her retirement after serving since 2015, she was the president of the Berlin Historical Society. So she was the president elected in 2015 after serving several years as director. She grew up in Berlin, raised her family here, and she had obviously a great interest in our Berlin's history. She has promoted the annual museum tours for local second graders and initiated bus tours to welcome new teachers and to further the studies of AP students. She has helped high school and college students as well as visitors and town officials to appreciate the rich history of Berlin. Her leadership style as president of the society has empowered members to use their talents and to be self-reliant. Her management skills have assisted in building an organizational foundation that promotes the society's mission, effectively maximizes limited resources, ensures programs coincide with the target audience's interest, and fosters a community relationship of support and trust. Sally ensures that action plans set at annual strategic planning sessions align with the organization's long-term goals. Under the leadership, the board approved the purchase of the 1771 House, the historic restoration of its key rooms, and the creation of a public research center. Sally has been instrumental in the organization achieving an increase in financial assets, memberships, local visibility, and museum attendance. Her contributions and dedication have advanced the museum to a vibrant, relevant institution that enriches residents' lives and preserves Berlin's cultural heritage. So in recognition of her years of service to the Berlin community, and especially to the Berlin Historical Society, the town extends her gratitude and best wishes to Sally for her continued success and happiness in the years to come. So yeah, that's great. She's been a great leader for them, and you know, as we all know, the history in Berlin is really incredible, that we just every day go to one of their meetings, or go to their museum, or go to an event, we learn more about our history, so, which is, which is a great history, so congratulations to her. And I mentioned, we have Juneteenth coming up, two days, right? So just a proclamation, the town of Berlin recognizes that June 19th is celebrated nationwide as Juneteenth, and that it serves to commemorate the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans within our nation. We further recognize Berlin's role in the abolition movement and its contributions towards obtaining emancipation for those who were enslaved. Physical and historical reminders of this rich history stand within our town to this day. Specifically, the Hotchkiss House located at 289 Main Street in Kensington, which housed the local abolitionist, abolitionist, and served as a stop on the Underground Railroad. As the journey north on the Underground Railroad was long, hard, and dangerous, but worth it for so many looking to escape slavery in the South. We recognize the courage and sacrifice the Hotchkiss family made by opening their home to shelter the brave souls along their road to freedom. So we hereby do proclaim a June 19th, as Juneteenth, to honor and celebrate our African-American citizens and all those who aided and supported their emancipation. So that's for our Juneteenth. I think, and there's something at the library, right? I think there's a June, on Saturday, at 11, the start of, 11 to 3, yeah, so we've gone to that, yeah. Yeah, they usually have some great guest speakers, and they do a good job with it, so if you can make it, try and get there. Okay, so mayor's update. Audience of citizens first, I'm trying to, you know, going too fast tonight. So audience of citizens, do we have anyone here for the audience of citizens? No one online, I see no hands, nobody in the audience, okay? Well, we'll move on to the mayor's update. We have some updates today we'll be talking about, and just a couple of things I just wanted to mention, our town clerk, right? Mary Beth, certified? Yes, we should thank her and honor her for that, so, because it was quite a task, right?
You have to, so it's five modules, it's elections, land records, public records, miscellaneous duties, and vitals. And you attend class, and then you have to sit for the exam. It is, you have to get a 70 or higher, and we're very proud of her, she did accept.
That's great. Glad to hear it, so, yeah, thank, yeah, she not here, but, but, but tell her, you know, yeah, it's a big deal, and we definitely recognize her for getting that work done, and appreciate that, so, that's great. Okay. So on to our consent agenda. Five items on the consent agenda. Donations for the library, waiving police fees in the approximate amount of $43,000 for the traffic control, and direction for the Berlin Fair, which will be held September 11th and 14th. Fairgrounds, accept the donation of $10,050 to the senior center donation account, that's great, and accept donations, excuse me, to the Berlin Animal Control Donation Account. So those are our items, we've all read them, I know, we'll go ahead and take a motion on the consent agenda.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, second? Thank you. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. So, moving right along.
Mayor, you are, good evening, everyone. Agenda item number one is an update on senior issues, including the senior center and with the YMCA, as well as senior housing, so I don't know, would you like to take the lead, or do you want me to?
You can, you can, yeah, you can, because you've been at a couple of the meetings. I mean, I was on the one today, but I'll let you.
So, and I want to thank the members of the Commission on Aging.
Yes.
For attending tonight.
Yes.
Well, and so, as you all know, senior housing has been a priority in the town for a long time, and we had a very big step forward last Thursday night with our planning and zoning meeting, where Vesta was approved for the, at the Knights of Columbus property in town on Percival Ave. And so, this is a big step for senior housing, and so I want to congratulate them and thank the members of the staff in Berlin for working to help make sure that that moved forward. And as far as next steps with this go, I did meet with our town planner this evening, and so just to give you an idea, their, Vesta will be coming to the town council for an application for a tax abatement on this. This is why, if you recall, we did modify, or we did add a tax abatement process for affordable housing for this. And so, also, they need to get funding from the state, from DOH, so fingers crossed on that, they're optimistic that they're going to get the funding necessary to move forward with this project, and they're hopeful that they can break ground later this year.
Yeah.
If they can get that funding, and it does, it does appear that they can. So it's, we're very encouraged by this. Again, it's 70 units that we're talking for seniors in the town of Berlin, and they are affordable as well.
Yeah.
Affordable, so.
That's a, that's a great update, Barbara, our chair was just coming in, so.
And I want to thank, Barbara attended the meeting and planning and zoning.
Oh, planning and zoning, okay, good.
You know, so.
That's good.
It was nice to get that support as well, and I think zoning commission appreciate.
So Barbara firsthand heard the good news about the senior housing, huh? At the planning and zoning meeting that they got passed through there? Yeah, sorry Barbara, I know you're getting settled, I'm, good, good, yeah, no, it's good news, you know, we're finally moving forward with that. And again, the great thing about this project, right, is more units than we had anticipated in the beginning, so that's, that's, keep it on that track, right, and, and keep it going, so what have we, what have we got next?
Well, the next update would be on the, working with the YMCA.
Yes.
On a potential indoor pool facility in town, and the mayor and I had a, I would say, a very good meeting.
Today.
Earlier today.
Yeah.
With members of the YMCA, and so the town has been working to provide the Y with all of the documents that they have requested, and this includes, we're going to be doing a phase one on the property, and we're doing borings to make sure that the soil suitability is able to be built on, as well as updating topo survey, we got to get CAD files to them as well, and all of this is going to be done very soon over the summer, and the sooner that we can get them this information, the sooner the Y can put together cost projections, and that's really the big thing that they need to know, is how much does this cost? And from what they told us today, they're anticipating and hopeful that the project would be somewhere around the 12 to 15 million dollar range, that's where they believe that it would be feasible. And so, they won't know this for sure until we, the town can provide the information that they need, and so we're diligently working, I want to thank Micah Hearn for his work on that, as well as the PBC, which met last Thursday to discuss this as well. So it's a team effort, and, and I think the Y understands that we're trying to get all the things for them and be a partner in this, and so it was a good meeting today, we'll continue to keep the council updated on anything, and I don't know if maybe you have anything to add?
And the good, the good thing is, you know, the, we had this grant from the state when we prepared the, the first, I guess, rendering of a potential community senior center for the town, that was paid out of the grant to the architect, but we had a lot of money left over, which is great, because the, we never got to the site work for that piece of property across from the high school on Patterson Way where we're looking at, so this will get us down the road further, I mean, nobody really ever looked at it, the architect never, never got that far, to make sure that's the proper place, or that it will be able to, you know, build on that piece of property, so, you know, with the, with the things we're doing now, we're getting that done. That information will be shared with the Y, but, you know, if, for some reason, and the council, if we remember, I don't know what it was, six months ago now, maybe, I don't know, we all voted to proceed with the Y project, hence, we are still in discussions with them, but, but by, by finishing some of this site work, we'll make sure that that's the proper location for a building, and if for some reason the Y doesn't do it, and you know, we're not at the end of the road with that, obviously, even if the town were to build something there, we will have the site work prepped and know that it would be a location that we could build on if we want to, with the town or the Y. So it is moving forward, so I got to say that, you know, I listened to the, two meetings ago, I guess, the Commission on the Aging about, I mean, the, the person taking notes there, mentioned that the thing was dead in the water, I mean, it was a recorded meeting, I was very disturbed to hear that, I don't know where that information would come from, of course, nobody had a source of the information, so I thought it was, you know, prudent that we update people, because if that's going around town, that's completely false, and I've been at the senior center probably four times in the month of May, and I said the very same thing, really everything we're talking about here, so I don't know where that information would come from, but that's totally false, couldn't be more false. You know, it's not a done deal, it's not a signed document yet that the Y is building it, but it's not dead in the water, not even close, but, especially after our conversation today, so I just, you know, that, that's disturbing that someone would, who's there, being paid by the town, that would put out false information, working at the meeting, and I just think that's worth being, you know, to be said to the community that that's not correct at all, and to the members of the Commission on the Aging, that that's just not right. I don't know what possessed that person to come up with that, but that's pretty unfair to all the hard work that we've all been doing in the town to get this thing going, so, anyway.
Back in April, didn't, when Jack Newsbeaver's company was in here, wasn't he supposed to do the testing?
Well.
And I thought testing was supposed to be started in April, which was going to take about three weeks.
Well, we had, we had to go out the contract, and, you know, took a while to get it, but we, we decided to, the town decided to do it, because then we would have it as well, you know, and we had the grant money that's really just sitting there, and if we don't use it for this stuff.
What's our, what's, what's the timeline to get any information then?
The timeline today, we got that?
Because I mean, this is, this has been going on for quite a while, and.
Yeah.
You know, and then the Y, when they, before the testing and everything came about, said, well, we could have something by the end of the first quarter, we're at the end of the second quarter now, and we're still waiting for information.
Yep, that's a fair point, and so, just, Jack was in on the meeting today as well, and so the town does have to follow procurement procedures with this, and so because we received grant funds from the state, and we're utilizing that, so we can't just, we couldn't just hire Jack's company, that's, we couldn't get reimbursed from the, from the grant, and so it's important, so sometimes it's, in order to do things right in municipal government, they take a little bit longer, and, and so that's, that's the main reason, but just to give you an idea of the timeline, so that phase one that I talked about.
Okay, yeah.
GeoQuest anticipates that taking four weeks from now, so we should have the phase one done in four weeks. The big question right now is on the borings, because Micah Hearn sent requests out to two different companies, one is so, they can't do it, they don't have the capacity, and the other is still evaluating, so I don't have a timeline on the borings yet, but as soon as I get it, I will provide that to you, and then we're working with Cole's Civil Engineering on the, the topo, the A2, the Mylars, and the CAD-based maps and drawings, and so that, they are actually out next week in the field, and they'll be on the onsite next week working on that, and so we expect to have that, everything should be done this summer, certainly, and so what I, what I said to Jack today is, as soon as we get that phase one, as soon as we get the CAD files, we're going to send it right over to the Y, we're not going to waste it, you know, we're not going to delay, we want to get them the information that we have, so that they can get those cost estimates and make sure that those are right, so we're working on it, and I do understand, you know, I, believe me, we all want to get this moving along too, but there's just some delays when it comes to this kind of, kind of work.
That's understandable, but I mean, going back to, you know, when we first said we were going to go move forward with this, it was like the end of last year, and here we are in June, and before you know it, it's going to be coming up on a year, and.
Forgot one more step, though, we also had to go to the Public Building Commission as well.
Okay.
They had to weigh in on this, and they only meet on a monthly basis, and so that's another, that adds time, so that, they met on Thursday, and they approved the phase one, and Mike got to work on it right away, so we're, we're moving, but yeah, there's, it's kind of a lot of hurry up and wait, so.
I mean, it's been a lengthy process even before then, but, you know, we've gotten through a lot of it.
It's a process.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be worse. It'd be worse, but.
All right.
You good? Cough drop, cough drop, no cough drop? Yeah.
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 There you go.
Maybe later, but, so, or maybe before the meeting, maybe it's better, but, yeah, no, we appreciate all the updates, and, you know, again, if anyone, any of our boards and commissions need updates, please feel free to call somebody on the council, call Ryan, and, you know, he's updated every day on what's going on with all these projects, so it is moving forward, you know, it's not done yet, nothing's done yet, so obviously, but we're working on it.
So if there's an update that needs to be brought about, and you feel pertinent, Ryan, if you could just send an email out to the council, and let us know where we stand, so, you know, we got some type of ideas to what's going on.
Absolutely, and the mayor and I had spoken about this as well, and we want to, my, our plan was to update at every single council meeting, an update on, on where we're at with.
Yeah, we discussed that in our, our one-on-one too, yeah, okay.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's worth the talking about, and, and just to clear up another point that I often say, if the Y did come to pass, if we do get that building built by the Y, the senior center is going nowhere, it will remain our senior center. That's always been said by me and by others, and that's the plan, if, if that comes to pass. If for some reason the town decides to build something, then, you know, that's a different story, but I'm pretty sure that would stay anyway, because I think if, you know, just, just looking at, there's two ways we could go here, well, there's three ways, we could build nothing, we could get the Y to do it, what we're looking for, certainly the indoor pool is the big priority, and they know that, and that's their priority too, or the town builds an indoor pool, let's say on that same property, if for some reason the Y doesn't work, and I don't mean to cast that out there that it's not working, but, I mean, you know, we have kind of three options that we're looking at, and we'll see where, where it all, you know, comes together at some point, but we're definitely going to do something there, and, you know, most likely, the senior center probably will always remain, because, you know, with the cost of building, the larger building that we all had discussed and decided not, not to build, the, I don't know what it ended up being, a 50,000 square foot building, I think was when we even, well, it was 70 in the beginning, they lowered it to 50, so, I mean, the Y is talking about a 25,000 square foot building, with, with definitely the indoor pool, that's what everybody wants, you know, which would be obviously open residence, swim team could use it, if the town did it, that's what we would look at, that, that's the Y's priority too, is the indoor pool, hopefully they can add a gym and some other, you know, activity rooms, but the senior center will remain, so that's not going anywhere. So that's where we're at on that, what else? That was the update, right? That's all we had, I think, on that? Yeah? Yeah, if anybody, you know, Commission on the Aging is here, if you guys have any, now would be, if you have questions, you're here, we're here, but if there's any concerns or questions, feel free, Barbara, I know you're not shy, you're never shy about asking questions, no, no. Okay, good, good. If there's any other questions, other members are here, whatever, if, you know, if not, you know, we'll, we'll keep everybody updated and with the, the facts, yes? Well, that's another plan we need to look at, we are, we have been talking about that too, to figure out how to add some parking there, yes?
Fill the parking garage downtown, down in the center of Berlin, then they can have them bussed up to the senior center, that might work.
Well, I mean.
But as good as it's going to get.
Yeah.
Replace the baseball field with parking, or to move all those people out of their houses and put parking there, that all works really well.
Yeah, we can figure out what to do with that, I'm not, I'm not sure, but, I mean, I. Well, if we took out, yeah, yeah, if we take out the island, I don't know what we could get with that, we could look at the rest of it, yeah. I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, I mean, at the events that I go to at the senior center, which has been frequently, always, but more frequently lately, I don't see the parking lot full by any means, right? But it's a little bit. Yes, those darn baby boomers.
We should put the parking lot near the building.
Well, I mean, that's, we're trying to.
Some folks, it's a long walk.
We're trying to figure out how to do that, if we took the, the, you know, that center section out, could we add some spots there? I don't, I don't know, but it is a difficult place to add a lot of parking, agreed?
Yeah.
Agreed. Yeah.
Dangerous.
Yeah.
You have parking up on that hill, and walking down a sidewalk that's often snowy.
Right.
And slippery, we're lucky we haven't had a lot of fog.
Yeah, I mean, we'll look at it, we're looking at it, we're trying to figure it out, I mean, you know, yeah, we'll, we'll look at it, I'll leave it at that, but, yeah, yes, Barbara. Yes, it's been a while, agreed, yes. I, I mean, I'm going to say this, that, you know, at special events, it's fairly crowded, like the 40th anniversary was wonderful at the senior center, we just had that a couple of weeks ago, but quite frankly, if you look at the attendance at the senior center, the attendance is not overwhelming, I think the last time I saw records on the attendance, we're, the parking? Yeah, I haven't heard that from people, but, yeah. Yeah. For the classes? And I, I mean, you're talking about, the last time I saw attendance records was 900 visits in a year, and that goes back a couple of years, 900 visits, it wasn't 900 people came in a year, it was 900 visits by less people. We have seven or eight thousand seniors in town. Yeah. Visits? And that seems awfully high, but I possibly, I mean, we had a bunch of events, we did have a lot of events, but. I was, I was at all those events, and I cannot add up 1,200 people in all those events put together, I mean, I was there, I saw. Yeah, I know, I know, we're off the, I know, it's, yeah, well, well, I don't want to make Barbara come up, I know we're off, but, but it was a discussion, and I wanted them to, but, yeah. No, I know Kate's going crazy, but you should be kind of over to the mic, but, you know, we, we could waive it for our seniors, it's good, we could waive for our seniors, but, I mean, we'll look at making it better, but I just don't see the attendance there, that, that seems highly unlikely, I was at every event in May there, there, combined, there was not 1,200 people that were in that senior section. Yeah, right. Yeah. I, I wonder if, even if we could find some parking closer, and use the senior center bus to pick people up, I mean, that's a possibility. Yeah, yeah, no, we'll figure that out, but. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we'll, we'll figure it out, but, you know, it's attended, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a great piece of the community, but it's not, it's not overwhelming by 7,000 seniors, I mean, I'm surprised the attendance wouldn't be higher, because you do great, you know, great things are done there, you know, there's great things at the senior center, but, but we'll work on that the best we can. It's a project that is definitely on our radar screen, and we'll do the best we can with the location that it's in. Any other, while we're still discussing this? Yes? Sure.
Also, there are, there'll be things on Facebook that it's helpful to really, so, you know, that's very helpful as well, the experience, you know, just being on the phone and so, and to think that you're doing that, you know, because it really helps a lot.
Appreciate that. Yes, yes. We love to deal in facts with all of our residents, and it's sometimes hard to get that out there, but it's always been the same story from the council, just sometimes out in, you know, the public, it gets turned around a little bit, but we understand that too, so thank you for that, and, yeah, we'll, for the whole town, we're trying to get, you know, the town manager and myself and the council have tried to really get more information out there by different newsletters and different things you could sign up for, so you get emails from the town, so you get updated, it's, it's, we're still working on it, but I think we get a lot of information out there from the town, I just don't think people, you know, some folks don't see it, or don't pay attention to it sometimes, but we'll work on kind of getting in front of people, getting in front of people as much as possible, so they see what's coming on. Of course, everybody's always invited to the council meeting, we can update them on any question they have, that's what the audience of citizens is for, and of course, they could be on Zoom, they don't have to, they don't have to come, so it's a lot easier to ask questions of the council and Board of Finance, or any board in commission, right? You can zoom into the meeting, and if you have questions on what's going on in your neighborhood, or in the town, or wherever, I mean, we want to hear from you folks, we're happy you're here asking us questions, because we want to get that information out, and hear your concerns too, you know, so, good, I think it was hopefully a good discussion, anything else, folks, you need to add, say anything, we're good? Okay, thank, thank you, folks for being here, Commission on the Aging, and keep in touch, we'll keep in touch. Okay, next.
All right.
Thanks, Ryan, too, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number two, and then. All right. We'll move on to agenda item number two, and this is an authorization to enter into a contract agreement with LaRero Engineering. LaRero is our LEP on Steel Boulevard project. As, as part of that project, we need to do what's called a completion of investigation report. It's, it's part of the remediation work to, to report on the efforts and the, the project as, as it gets remediated, and it's required by DEEP. And so, I'm not sure, is, is Jim Mahoney on this evening? He was, uh.
I don't see him there, but.
Jim was supposed to be on.
He said that he was available.
Okay. I don't, we don't necessarily need him. Can move on. So, so what's before you this evening is to move the bidding process for this. LaRero is, is giving us the same billing rates that they have through the Department of Administrative Services. It's the DAS rates on this. And so, the cost is $9,500. There is sufficiency of funds in, in your packet, and, but this is required to, to complete the remediation of Steel Boulevard. So, we're looking for a, a waiver of the town's bidding process to continue to use LaRero, who's already on site for this.
Is this ever gonna be over with? I'm sorry, I had to say that. I'm sorry.
What's LaRero gonna do when this cow dies?
Yeah. It is the endless, I mean, not, it's not, and it's not the fall of, of, of anybody, of the developers or the town, but it's just, it's been one heck of a long road with this development, and it's looking beautiful, and it's going well, and it's almost over, but it seems like every day, there's a week, every council meeting, there's more, right?
We'll be back.
Yeah, of course, I know, I know. I, I, I know that, but it's okay. I mean, it was a, it was a very, very contaminated site. We know that. And from what was there back in the, back in the old days, so that factory and the gas station and everything got dumped in the ground. Yeah, no, we, I mean, we understand it, but it's just like, it's, it's been one heck of a road. But the, the development looks great, and thank God we're started on the, the final unit, the final apartment unit there, building, and that's great, so.
We had good partners to work with, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's helped as well, too.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, no other questions? We'll go ahead and take a motion?
Move to waive the bidding process and authorize the town manager to enter a non, not to exceed contract amendment with LaRero Engineering of $9,500 for the preparation of a completion of investigation report for the property at 55 Steel Boulevard with the cost charged to the Missoula Brownfields grant account, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you all. And the next item is, item number three. This is an annual item that comes before you this time of year. We're beginning the new fiscal year in just a, in just a couple short weeks here. And so, with that, the Berlin Peck Memorial Library needs to order books for the next year, and so, working through two different consortiums, they get the, the best pricing. And so, with that, there is Baker &amp; Taylor and/or Ingram. And so, our, our library director, Carrie is with us this evening, and so Carrie can explain. I don't know if you want to go into the book shortages or, or anything, but I'll turn it over to you, Carrie.
Sure. So, yes, we typically use Baker &amp; Taylor. We've been using them for probably 10-plus years. They have been very recently, in the past couple of months, having some supply issues. We hope to continue to use Baker &amp; Taylor, but there is a possibility we would have to use Ingram, which is kind of their competitor. Ingram is also an approved vendor through the Connecticut Library Consortium, so we'll know probably in the next few months whether we need to switch completely over to Ingram, or if we just rely on Ingram for one, some books that we can't get from Baker &amp; Taylor. So, yeah, so Baker &amp; Taylor and/or Ingram for books, for adult, child, and teen books totaling 74,050. And then, Library Connection Inc. for databases, books, supplies, data services, and audiovisual items for a total of 68,285.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, why? Why, is there a shortage on books? This is the first I've heard of it.
It's Baker &amp; Taylor. I think their company maybe is having some issues getting, getting the books in from their suppliers. And we have heard that Ingram might be a little bit better, and Baker &amp; Taylor about three years ago had, they were hacked, and we couldn't use them for, I want to say, a month, and I feel like they've never really recovered since then. Been having issues with them since, but this is the worst it's ever been this past, a lot of things were on backorder or canceled, so we just have to kind of keep our eye on it.
Is this something that you preorder, or do you just order as you go throughout the, you know, fiscal year?
For, for books, both. We have some authors who we have kind of standing orders with, because we always get every James Patterson, every Daniel Steele, so there's probably like 30 authors where we get those automatically, and they're just ordered all, you know, automatically. And then there's other things that we just order throughout the year.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And now a book shortage too, to add to whatever other shortages are out there. That's a new one. Never heard that one before. That's, I know, I know, Donna, that's a good question. It's like, now we got a book shortage too. Oh, my goodness. Well, thanks for your hard work in getting us books for our library. That's, that's good. Any, any other questions, folks?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders for the 2026 fiscal year for the following vendors, due to the library's participation in the Connecticut Library Consortium. And in the Library Connection Incorporated, as in the best discounts have already been provided. Both vendors have been approved for bidding waives, waivers for at least the past seven fiscal years. This is in the best interest of the town. Supplies, $3,200 for books, $70,850. Baker, Taylor, and Company and/or Ingram for adult, child, and teen books totaling $74,050. Databases, $375 for books, $2,490 for supplies, $500 data services, for a total of $34,000. Audiovisual, $31,000. Library Connection Incorporated, $68,285.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, so moved. And thank you, Carrie. And I, I want to tell you this. I heard this from a relative of mine at a graduation party the other day. She, she goes around with her, with her son sometimes to different libraries when they're in different parts of the state, and she came to the Berlin Library recently, and great things to say about Berlin, comparing it to other libraries that she had visited, and she said, oh, your library market's great in town. I said, we know it is, so. So, good, good to hear that. And, you know, just totally out of the blue, she said, oh, you know, we happen to go there, and I was impressed with it, so. Doing a heck of a job, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. We're busy as ever, actually.
Yeah, that's what I hear. Yeah, that's great.
Carrie, I, I hear the same things from my girlfriend as well.
There you go. There you go. Excellent. Okay. What we got?
All right. Agenda item number four. This is to enter into an agreement with Water and Wetland LLC. This is another annual event for treatment of invasive species. And I believe, let's see, yep, Steve Woods is here, and he's already at the mic.
He's already up here. He's, he's just, he's just.
He had martinis from.
Just glad. Just glad it's not disc golf, so I'll turn.
Hold the disc golf comment.
Yeah, yeah, we'll hold that. We had enough of those last night.
I think this is our fourth year looking to go into contract with Water and Wetland. They have done a fabulous job over the last four years. I think we all can see that most of the fragmities are gone. There's been a giant reduction of the water chestnut, and they have already procured the permits for the next year and probably the year after. Joe is online. If you have any questions, fire away.
I mean, guys have questions?
No.
No.
Keep it up.
Do you want us to continue to deliver the pamphlets into everybody's?
Don't listen now.
Yeah. Yeah, if we don't, if we don't do it, we know it'll happen, yeah.
You kill a few thousand fish and never hear the end of it.
No, continue, continue. I appreciate it.
Very true.
No, it looks great.
Yeah, it's been looking great. It's, it's, it's been going great, so we're happy to, happy to see all that, so we appreciate it.
Awesome.
Appreciate it, Joe.
Looks great.
Beautiful.
I think it's really.
Oh, yeah, the, the fountains, yeah, they were great. The other night I saw there. Yeah, red, white, and blue. That was, that's really nice.
You do, you're doing a great job.
Yeah. It's good. It's all good. Okay. We'll go ahead and take a motion with nothing further.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedure for the fiscal year 2026 to Water and Wetland LLC in the amount of $30,000 for yearly service, installation, removal of fountains at the Veterans Park, including permitting, permitting and treatment of invasive species at several waterways throughout the town. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other further comments or questions? Hearing none. All is, then all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Woody.
Hey, Woody.
Thank you all. Next item, agenda item five. This is with the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee, or otherwise the BRRFOC. And this is another contract for the, we would enter for the disposal of household hazardous waste. And every year, there's an annual collection, and so Berlin residents are able to, to attend this and dispose of, of their, of their waste. And so, this would allow the town manager to execute an agreement with MXI Environmental Services for the collection, management, and transportation. And so, it's a good thing for the residents of Berlin, and, and we want to thank the BRRFOC for working to, to do this on an annual basis, which will be in October, and so we'll make sure that we get the word out on that as well.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. I was gonna say, when, when is it? Good. Questions, folks? We're good? All right, we'll go ahead with the motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to execute an agreement with MXI Environmental Services LLC for the collection, management, transportation, and proper disposal of household hazardous waste materials in coordination with the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee.
Thank you, Charlie. Second? Thank you, Donna. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so moved.
Zee one. Thank you, guys. The next item is for, this is a project authorization letter or a PAL from DOT. This is with, I believe it's with traffic control signs and, and equipment that they need to upgrade. Now, I know Mike, our Public Works Director can speak to this. I think this is, from what Mike was telling me, this is kind of a, a new, a recent event, these PALs that were asked to sign.
Yes. The PALs you, you've signed in the past were just for funding to show what portion of funding goes that the town is actually going to have to be responsible for. This is a no-funding letter. It's just saying basically, we have to do, remove the snow and maintain the sidewalks and ramps for this. It's a signal that Chamberlain Highway and Southernton Road. They're gonna redo that. As part of that, they're gonna put in sidewalks and ramps to nowhere. So, Woody's gonna have to take care of it.
What? Ramp? Oh, yeah, what, yeah.
Across the island, and then across Chamberlain Highway.
But there's nothing there but.
I know that. I know.
What?
Woody has a policy right now of, for every signal they put in, they put ramps around. If you'll, you'll even see it somewhere on some main roads where they have no sidewalks, and they'll put like, almost like a curved radius, a ramp, a crosswalk to another ramp, but no sidewalks on either end. So.
Will it be like the turnpike where it dead ends into the pole?
Right, exactly. So.
Oh, my God.
But ultimately, the town is responsible for ongoing maintenance.
Maintaining that.
Moveable, that kind of thing. So, and that's all called out in, we have a master municipal agreement with the DOT anyway. So, this is an extra step that makes us sign this, which there's a lot of municipalities around here are not happy with this, because it's more work for, like, I'm here talking, you wasting your.
Well, well, no, I mean, it's more work for the town, of course. And you guys? For what? Well, that too.
CROG is looking into this. They're gonna actually be talking to DOT about this if they haven't already, because as one of my colleagues in another place said, don't sign it. He just is, he's taking a position like it's a waste of time. There's no funding. There's no involvement of the town at all, and the responsibilities are already called out in, in an agreement that we've already, we signed.
In another agreement, yeah, the initial.
But tonight, if you can let Ryan, you know, authorize Ryan to sign it, we can, or if you can just take a stand and say, no. It's up to you.
So, they're not doing anything with the light itself?
No, they are. They're replacing the signals.
The signal.
The trap, the, the, the controlled equipment.
Yeah.
Everything. It's gonna be a brand-new signal there. And the island, you know, the island there, they're gonna be putting a sidewalk across it and then angling it across the Chamberlain Highway.
See a sign at Reservoir Road and Chamberlain Highway. We have accidents on a fairly regular basis. And to be wasting money on something that is working, and we don't need to add additional maintenance, you know.
Just, just so you know, this is, this is, this is something that road, Chamberlain Highway, this is north. So, they're putting a ramp here. Sidewalk across the island with a ramp this way, and putting a ramp here, but there's no sidewalks anywhere around that.
There's nothing. There's nothing.
That's kind of their policy. It's state's money.
Yeah.
It's our money, but. So, that's.
I, I think it's our money. Last time I checked, but, yeah, I don't know.
Is it, is there any immediacy to this?
Uh, no.
Would you kind of say we're not happy with this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think.
Wait, we're not happy with the project or to sign the letter?
To sign.
To sign the letter.
Yeah.
Can we see if the CROG people are gonna do anything with this? I mean, if there's enough of us that say, wait a minute, why are we doing this?
There's another, is the CROG meeting is next week, so I can bring that up, and I can find out what.
Bring it up.
Yeah.
Tell them we're not.
I've done that beforehand, saying, you know, what, what is the purpose of this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tell them that we're not happy with it either, so.
To me, when I saw this.
Get more information. Table it for now.
Like.
It just, it's not making sense.
From my colleagues.
Yes.
They're not happy.
No, I could see how they wouldn't.
Last year, they did a lot of drainage work on an intersection. Is this, was this precipitated from the way they had to move the drainage around?
I don't know. I know that they're running, like, gonna be running conduits underneath, you know, for the electric equipment. So, and I don't know what size mast and arm they're gonna be putting, like.
They have to hold the camera for the toll system. That's why.
They're huge.
They have to make it stable for the camera, so when they institute the tolls, it'll be. They're doing every.
I haven't thought about a toll, but you never know.
Why do they want a camera there? Well, I think we should send a message that we're not happy with it, and.
Agreed. I agree with that, absolutely.
Yep.
A solid no is just as helpful, helpful as a solid yes.
There you go.
Make a stand.
We table this, then?
Thank you.
My, just a question. The letter from DOT says the construction project is to replace existing speed limit signs, including school zone speed limit signs?
Wait, is this the signal?
Yeah, that's why.
Uh-oh.
Or there's.
Yeah, traffic signal.
Multiple letters.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering if we have, because we had gotten a couple of these, and, and DOT wants us to sign these all, but we.
Why can't it be broken down?
You might have, I have the letter that they want you to sign.
Yeah.
This was another, they keep sending these notifications to us.
Okay.
Oh, was that the wrong one in the packet?
I think it's the wrong one in the packet. That's all. It's just.
Yeah, it should be this one here.
Yeah, no.
Sorry, it's this one. Oh, maybe, okay, maybe one slipped in though.
So, I don't know, which is, which is.
This is two-page.
Is this the one that I, I was supposed to sign?
They said, they, yeah, exactly, so don't sign that.
Don't sign. No, I'm not signing it. I'm not signing it. No, no, no.
You know, it's interesting.
Never sign nothing.
Way to go.
2024, or they both.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we.
Best not to sign anything, right?
Okay, good deal.
It's what we'll do.
So. I'll give you this one.
Yeah.
So, and I have opposite that, obviously.
All right, we'll put this up here, Ryan. I'll just give you that.
That one back, just so.
Do we have to?
Oh, nice catch.
An action to table it, or just move no action?
Yeah, I would just say table. We'll table it, all right? Nope. No, no action. No action. No action.
Okay. All right.
Yes, that's true. We're not taking it up later.
No tables.
No tables.
Well, the action says move to authorize the town manager. We wouldn't be authorizing the town manager. That's what's in the document.
I, because the mayor is on there, I was just gonna have you guys change the motion to say. Well, nobody's signing it.
No.
Nobody's signing anything, yeah. We're not signing anything.
I heard these are continuing to come out, so we'll just put them on the shelf for now.
Yeah, and I'll push back. I'll reply to DOT tomorrow and all that.
I mean, DOT, I mean, on this here, instead of listing all these things here, you know, since they're all different, they should be broken down in separate letters. You should have it itemized. You know, this is just one big paragraph.
Okay. Donna, you gotta whip.
Thank you.
You gotta, you gotta whip that legislature and whip them in the. Good luck with that.
And you're, for working so hard to get those signs up over the break.
Oh, yeah.
The gold star.
The gold star, yeah.
Make that happen.
Well, I also.
Very, very.
Well, Sign Pro's, that company, they expedited that order.
I know.
And they were waiting, waiting, waiting. I know you know that. But they had, the quote was, I think it was for eight months, we had the quote and the, and they're, they had like a, you know, the graphic, um, and it was ready to go, and I apologized to them, I said, this is a really a small order and there's been so much back and forth. But, um, yeah, they did a great job. And their sign proofs are great, because they dimensioned them out, they showed where the holes are, yeah, everything. So, uh, nice job on their, on their part.
The wedding's off.
I'm glad we made it happen, so.
Joey.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Now tell your guys, thank you. Okay.
Alright, where are we at?
Moving on, item seven.
Number seven. Wow, we're moving on tonight.
We're talking, uh, school vehicles again, vans, and so Jim Simons is here. Uh, he's been doing, uh, a really great job.
Yeah, doing a great job? No, yeah, of course, of course he is. Jim, the best ever. Come on.
Looking for ways to update our, our fleet for school vans.
Yeah.
With, uh.
That's good.
You know, as fiscally responsible as possible, and this is again, with Roberts Dodge in Meriden. And again, if you remember, we've approved of a few of these, because instead of going off of state contract, these, this is actually cheaper, uh, so the town and, and as Jim puts in here, you can see the savings, uh, because of that, so.
That's great. No questions, right? No?
No, not at all.
Save Jim a trip up here? That's great. Even better, even better.
Yeah.
What?
No, you take a motion, but we're gonna ask Jim to come up after.
Okay, alright, oh, we tried, Jim. We tried, we really tried, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town's purchasing policy to purchase four 2025 Chrysler Royale LX vans for an amount not to exceed $159,468 from Roberts Dodge in Meriden, Connecticut, to be used by the Berlin Board of Education for student transportation. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, Charlie. Second? Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions? If not, vote on the motion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
So I'd just like to invite Jim up, because while he's here, I thought we could take just a brief break from the agenda to talk about the potential firefighter get-together.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, I'd like, you know, thought it might be helpful.
Yes. At number eight already, that's impressive. Yes, sir, welcome, Mr. Jim.
How we doing?
Good. How you doing tonight?
If you want me to, what do you want?
What do you want to eat?
What do you guys want to eat? Where do you want to eat at? That was the question.
That's up to you. I gave you a couple of, uh, couple of options, um, once at golf course.
Yes.
The other one was the, uh, golf horn, which is possibly a, um.
Yes.
That's up to you.
I know we, remember, we, we had something at the golf, we've done a few things at the golf course. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we've had some stuff there.
Weather's nice, and even if it's not, they have that tented area.
Yeah, yeah, in the tent, it'd be in the tent. Yeah.
Something more formal?
Nah, I don't, I don't.
It's time to be outdoors, worry.
Is there a time we're thinking of? Do we, do we have ever, like, a timeframe?
I was trying to keep it out of the late fall when we, the election season.
Yeah.
Prior to that.
Yeah, well, we wanted, yeah, we wanted to do it.
September, we have Labor Day, and then we have, I'll back up by the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. What are we thinking? August?
August.
August?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I think so.
Yeah.
Maybe mid, before everybody goes back to school and stuff, what do you think?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I think so. I think so. Something like that, we can see what's available out there? Might check and see what's, what do you?
Yeah, we can, uh, I can reach out to, uh, golf course and, and, but, uh, we also are gonna need some funding for this.
Oh, there's a matter of funding, yeah, that's funding, that's silly funding. Yeah, well, we'll, we'll.
Your card.
Sure, sure. Let me give back all the, all, all the paychecks I've gotten over the last few years. Let me give it back to the town, I'm gonna do that.
And talk.
Alright.
Yeah.
Wave ourselves.
Any idea how many folks may want to attend?
Do we have a, will we have like a rough number? So we have some?
On the sign-up sheet, on the websites.
Okay. Okay.
Last dinner that we did in these rural, and I think we had like 62 there.
Okay, okay.
Be in the middle of August, we may do some, uh.
Right, vacations, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If you could get a availability and a budget number for us, we could approve the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll put that together.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
That's good.
Yeah, that'll be good, yeah, thanks.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you for. Next up is item eight. This is.
Looking number eight.
All know, the, uh, Berlin High School has a current mold issue that's within the tiles. That is, uh, not airborne, it's, it's totally safe, but now that, that school is out and it's summer vacation, we'd like to get in there, at least as the report called for, when, uh, when they did the, the remediation report, they said the first thing to do would be to take out visible mold tiles. And that's really all we can do over the summer, is replace them. We're gonna have to do a full replacement, uh, most likely next year. And so that's gonna be much more cost, costly to the town. Uh, this is, this is more like a Band-Aid to just, you know, do, do what we can with the limited amount of time that we have.
Would you just be pulling out the tiles that you can see the mold on and then re- replacement tile in? And then next year, we'd have to go back in?
Yeah, that's the plan, yeah.
Yeah.
To get the visible one.
So Doug is here, he can speak to that, but the, the company, what, Wes Janney is going to actually go in and they're going to mark each tile that needs to come out. And so they'll be starting, I think, as early as Friday?
Oh, good.
I'll let, I'll let Doug talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Ryan, that's Mayor Consult, yeah, just kind of follow up with the PBC, the consultant, they're gonna take it to the next phase, so.
Yeah.
We have the obvious stuff in the corridors, the white tile, which were identified in initial report, past areas, and this would be to audit the rest of the school. We really can't have a magnitude for temporary repairs without a defined scope.
Right.
Because we wanted that kind of annuity to come through the consult, not for somebody to.
Just point.
Just throw it in, or maybe the bath, or somebody, well, I saw one here, I saw one there, and it just, I'm seeing how we're doing whole school anyways.
Right.
It's kind of define the immediate temporary repairs, the commissions working with the consult for the next steps.
Yeah.
See this progress through the, for the rest of the calendar year, at the next fiscal year, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's the way we gotta do it, yeah.
Spot repairs, we're not gonna wax the school this summer.
Right.
Buff it and do the best they can with it, and try to make it look as good as possible with the highlights and colors, and try to make it look a little like it's supposed to be there for miles.
Yeah, no, that's the best we could do, but that's, at least we're getting it started.
Yeah, so I do want to highlight with the, the funding for this.
Yes.
Also, the, the motion is to call, or we would need a, a town meeting, because we would be using the rest, uh, appropriating the rest of the school reimbursement from, uh, the high school, the, the 2.6 million that we received. So there's a $164,748 left in that, and so that's where the funding for this would be coming from.
Will that cover it completely, or?
We hope so, it's, we're kind of a little ahead.
Just wondering.
Initial costs we have back from some defined areas, you know, we're certainly well below that threshold, but this would allow for anything that happens over the summer, throughout the school year. And we hope whatever's not extended would certainly go towards the next phase, so.
Okay.
Okay, questions? Any other questions? We good?
Got it done.
Okay, let's take a motion, Charlie.
Move to call a town meeting at 6:45 PM on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, to approve a fiscal year 2025 non-budget appropriation from the Berlin High School Construction Fund, for the Berlin High School moisture account. The capital non-recurring fund in the amount of $164,748 to fund initial efforts to temporarily replace four tiles at the Berlin High School due to slab-on-grade moisture issue. Move to utilize state contract number 20PSX0088 for Bartholomewal Contract Interiors of Hartford, Connecticut, and McBride Wayside Carpet Company of Newington, Connecticut, and issue purchase orders with inch creches as necessary for both contractors without exceeding the account balance depending on both contractors' availability for phased temporary flooring tile repairs related to the slab-on-grade moisture issues at Berlin High School, pending approval by the Board of Finance.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Thanks, sir.
Thank you all, and, and Doug has the next one, too.
Okay.
Uh, with, and we've spoken about this in the past, and this is, I want to thank Doug for working on this. Uh, the demolition of 92 Deming Road at the, at the Mobile Home Park, and so I'll turn it over to Doug, but this is the plan to get that done.
Thank you, Ryan. Again, this is, uh, it's been identified in years past, we've been talking about actually what the best use of that, future of the site, and then what to do with the home. It's, it's more in disrepair, certainly can be refurbished, but it would cost more to renovate it and restore it than it would to move it, and knowing what, I think the path forward is, it seems to make the most sense, so. There's, um, you know, local contractor, we're, you know, we have some potential for savings with, if we do anything ourselves, and with some unknowns, as the summer progresses with fill and what's available. Certainly use Steel Boulevard, like, if we can get a good deal on that fill, so that may help.
Oh.
Thought the Steel Boulevard, though, was polluted, you couldn't move it out of there.
Get a good deal.
So is there, do we have bids on this, or estimates other than this one here?
This is kind of a unit cost based on, um, you know, we're, we're gonna handle the environmental separately, so basically coming into demo, a clean building, just unknown cost of the true weight when it goes to the dump. So there's, there's kind of a range, and it's only gonna bill out the fixed cost to come back, so. Once we know the cost of demo weight.
I, I didn't know we had an on-call demolition contractor. I've seen excavators and dump trucks, and I didn't know we had a demolition guy on call.
Yeah, yeah, he's, we're using kind of his rates for his machines, but he does hold the license. And then he did offer up, you know, we certainly work with Mike and Steve and Carp, that if there's anything we can do in-house, potentially save some more, but this was the kind of.
This is kind of an open-ended bid, and who's gonna pay for the disconnected utility?
It's in, it's in there.
It said by others.
Eversource, um, that's a free charge, they disconnect that, and then the water and sewer would be provided.
By who?
First contractors would, would disconnect the water and sewer.
Cause it didn't, it said, that would be additional on top of the $36,000.
I think there's a line in there for the water and sewer disconnect, that leaves $3,500.
I don't understand why we don't get quotes from other contractors, is my problem.
It's not.
It's a pretty easy RFP, just say how much to knock down a house, I mean.
Yeah, if we wanna put something together, we can.
One of the first houses on that row, or this area?
The caretaker's home, it's kind of a greenish.
Green, ugly thing, yeah.
Yeah. Be pulled to the complex and, yeah, go caretaker's homes. Yeah, certainly some options, just because it was close to threshold, and knowing that there were some unknowns, that we kind of went with a not to exceed, having some established cost, unit cost, we'll know more when it goes to the dump, or we may, we're not doing house.
We were trying to get this done, but at the end of the fiscal year, uh.
The calendar year, just.
It's just, I'm sorry, but every meeting, we give the same contractor a no-bid item for 40 or 50 grand, and just, it doesn't look right. They do very good work, don't get me wrong, and, and they're an asset to the town, but I just think we should get other bids.
Want to get other bids, we can do that.
What do I do, folks? You wanna, uh, can we get other bids by the next meeting, so we?
At least some quotes, if it's not a formal bid.
Yeah, not, but, yeah, just.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of going off of what we have for known conditions, and then it's listed in that proposal as far as, you know, unknown weights and unknown tonnages, so it's, it's hard to get a hard.
Yeah, I see that there, yeah, it's there.
Yeah, if you want to do a formal bid, we can do that, and.
I, I don't know, formal bid or just some.
Couple other quotes, and, and, you know, doesn't have to be a formal bid, but at least, so it looks like we checked, you know, we gotta do our job.
Yeah.
One or two other, you know, estimates, so you don't even have to do a formal bid, I don't think.
No, I don't think so. I, I think we could just get a couple of quotes.
I'll get a couple more quotes, Doug.
That makes sense, then.
Yeah.
Like you said, you want to get this done as soon as possible, so.
We've only been waiting on it 10 years.
For July 8th, we can do that.
Try our best for, you know, the first meeting is July 8th, second, depending on how fast people get back to us.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just like with any contract, we should have more than one bid, regardless if, you know, they've been doing a lot of work for the town. So you can compare apples to apples.
Yeah, 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 no, they do good.
Nothing about.
Really does a good job, they get paid for it.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll just, uh, tip, no action on that, we'll, uh. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Doug, appreciate it.
Alright, we're moving right along, though, so agenda item number.
Yeah, something's wrong, no.
Ain't done yet.
We're, we're not out of here? Now we're good. Go ahead, sorry, Ryan.
No, no, you're good, no. So agenda item number 10 is, uh, for the town of Berlin to support and, uh, the reconstruction center grant application, and I'll turn it over to our deputy mayor. Uh, this is his agenda item.
I'm asking the council to support, um, DEEP to give a grant to CROG. CROG approached the Reconstruction Center, which is a nonprofit, uh, reuse store that specializes in building material. And the used building material stores have closed up in Connecticut, this is the last one. And CROG realized that it's an asset, and the state's asking the towns to reduce solid waste. And people donate usable mill, building material instead of putting them in a dumpster and going to the landfill, to the store, the store sells it to keep their operation going, pay their rent and pay for their truck and so forth. If they get this grant, the money will go through CROG to the Reconstruction Center, and it'll be a shocking thing in the state of Connecticut, it'll be a funded, non-mandated program. What'll happen is the towns will be able to get a dump, uh, shipping container and put it at their transfer station, if they want to, and this grant will cover the cost of the container. And if a resident wants to, uh, donate a vanity or a kitchen sink, or whatever they want to take out of their house that's usable, they can go to this container and the Reconstruction Center will have, uh, equipment and facility to manage this stuff and keep it out of the waste stream. And, and it'll be volunteer, each town can join if they want, but the grant will cover the cost, so. We're asking the council to support that, help us get that grant.
Dana White here. I've used this facility for decades, literally. Whenever we had, you know, tenants changing or whatever, you needed a odd piece of woodwork, or, you know, um, a new cabinets that you could refinish and put, this was, it saved a fortune, a small fortune, and it didn't go into the landfill. And I have to, uh, say that I did a letter of support, uh, to the CROG people that are coordinating this grant, you know, through DEEP, um, and, uh, one of my rankings in environment signed on to this as well. I mean, this is, it doesn't cost us anything, and it makes lots of sense. So if we can somehow get this accomplished, I think it would be wonderful.
Any questions, or?
No, it sounds great, Charlie.
I'm in support.
Great, yeah.
Definitely in support.
Yeah, perfect. You can read the motion, yes.
Move that the town of Berlin support the Reconstruction Center grant application process through sustainable materials management grant.
So, uh, second? Thank you. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Doesn't, uh, he have to abstain, since this is his, uh, don't you have to abstain on this one, Charlie?
Uh.
Since this is.
Wait, do we have to?
Pardon me?
What, what do you have to abstain?
Are you talking about, is there some conflict of interest that?
Does he have to pay on the vote?
He volunteers there, but.
I'm not paid by this outfit, I'm.
You don't get any, any financial benefit, okay? Alright.
Okay.
Just a question, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's good.
If I was a paid employee, I would understand it, but I'm not.
I will pay here.
We all are very highly paid here, yes. We don't need extra jobs.
Thank you, everybody.
That's good, that's a good thing. Okay, good. Where are?
Every town, every town that town residents putting that thing will save.
Yeah.
Each town under fifty dollars.
Yeah. Well, plus it's somewhere to, to bring it to, and environmentally sound too, yeah. Yeah, because then you never know what to do with some stuff, you want to, it's still good stuff, but you don't want it, and you want to.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah. Yeah.
Never been used even.
Right, right.
This store takes paint all the time.
Oh, it does.
You don't have to wait for your annual collection.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Part of paint care, so they take care of it.
Okay. Good. Let's hope it works out.
All right. The next item is, and this will be familiar for those of you who are on the ordinance review committee, because we've been talking a lot about town's existing noise ordinance, and we've been working with SH Acoustics on recommendations on how the town can strengthen its existing noise ordinance, and working with their recommendations. Attorney DiNofrio put together those recommendations into the town's noise ordinance, which would, if adopted, require a, a public hearing, and we'd have to go through that process, and so the proposed draft ordinance, ordinance is in your packet alongside, and so with this, just to speak about it, you may recall, this all came about with what happened with Brightfeeds, and how we had a company in town that was, although not over the decibel threshold, was creating a tonal issue, and this, in that case, it was a low-frequency band tone that was disturbing the neighbors, the residents, and so Tessa, who's on here too, if you have any questions specifically on, on the sound aspect, had sent us an ordinance, which was actually taken from New York City, and which deals with noise on a, on a much larger scale.
No noise in New York.
Yeah. But, so, so there was quite a bit of conversation on, well, does this, does this apply to Berlin, Connecticut, and, and answer was, yes, you can take the, the noise tones that would impact citizens in New York, would impact citizens of Berlin. And so this is, this is meant to be another, another tool to gauge sound, sound levels in the town, and so we would, we, similar to the process now, we would need to, we would need to upgrade our equipment, and we would need to upgrade training, and both of those things are something that SH Acoustics had said that they could, they could provide the training, and they did give us some estimates on the equipment that would be needed as well, and I did meet with Chief McNally this morning on this too. The chief had a couple of concerns that basically he wanted to make sure that we wouldn't be putting undue stress on our officers, that they wouldn't become the, the sound police, and that they wouldn't be, end up testifying in court and whatnot because of this, and Jeff can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but the way, the way I interpret this ordinance would be similar to what happened now with, with Brightfeeds, where we get a complaint from a, from a resident, and the police would be trained on this equipment, and they would be able to determine whether or not there was potentially a problem. They would be essentially, is there smoke? And if there was, we would have to call an expert in, like SH Acoustics, to actually do the, the fine-tune measurements to determine whether or not there was a violation of the noise ordinance, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the police that would be determining that. They would, they would be utilizing the tools to, to see if it warranted bringing in experts, and so after discussing that, I think the chief seemed to be okay with that, but that's kind of how, Jeff, is that basically how we would do that?
It really depends on the individual case, and whether or not the property owner responding to the noise ordinance violation. You know, if, if it has to get litigated, then anybody that took any measurements, regardless of what the ordinance says, would have to testify. If you recall, when we originally drafted the noise ordinance, there was similar concern about the PD having more responsibility and more duty for the entire enforcement structure, and we streamlined the ordinance in an effort to avoid that, so this does go more back in the direction of what the original ordinance looked like. But, you know, if it's a if it's a complaint under the existing ordinance, the PD would have to support it from an evidentiary perspective. If it's a complaint under the proposed amended ordinance, if after the public hearing, the council adopts the amended ordinance, the nature of the new component here, the tonal component, does require more specialized equipment by people that have specialized training, so I would suspect that if we did have a complaint that triggered the new provision of the proposed amended ordinance, we would need to go and hire, you know, an acoustical engineer to come and do those measurements, and to testify if it got to that point. But so far, I mean, very few, I can tell you, in the towns that represent that have had noise ordinances for a long period of time, very few of those cases end up in court. More often than not, it gets resolved preliminarily before you even need to get an expert involved, and then after you get an expert involved, if the other side has an attorney, they talk to their client about the expense of having to get their own expert, and usually gets resolved, so. Not really worried about all that much additional court activity, because right now there's none from this ordinance. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and plus, honestly, before, I mean, we had a couple instances, right, before Brightfeeds with a couple noises in different neighborhoods, different things, but overall, the history is rare. I mean, we really haven't, you know, had to utilize it, so, and then we hope to keep it that way, so. We shouldn't, we certainly do not want to overburden our police department and their personnel, and I, yeah, I, I don't foresee that happening either, and.
The chief is on too, a few.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, chief, if you want to add anything, we, we, we hear your concerns, and, you know, if you're okay with it, I don't, we'll certainly try our best not to overburden you guys, and use our engineers, you know, if we need some real official reports. If that works for you, chief.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, yeah, the meeting this morning with the the town manager went well, we're, I had, my concerns were answered when we met this morning, and what Attorney DiNofrio just said was exactly what we talked about this morning. I just didn't, after reading some of that language, it was very technical, and I was concerned that if our officers ever had to testify to some of that technical stuff, they're not sound engineers. It's not like when we go to a loud party or something like that, we're talking about non-transient, you know, more involved, so I'm good with it, the way it is right now.
Good, alright, well, appreciate it, chief. Yeah, appreciate the discussion, and that's good, yeah, no, it's certainly not our intention to overburden your guys with, with more than you already have to do, so. Any other questions here, are we good?
Nope.
You're good, and you're right.
We also have Tessa on, like I said.
Oh, Tessa, yeah.
If anybody has any.
Yeah, any questions for the engineer?
No.
No, we're good. Okay, I mean, we've all been through a lot of noise education on noise the last year or so, so I think we're mostly well-versed in a lot of it, so. Yes. No, I just kind of heard of it, I, I, I agree, I agree. So, alright, and that's good, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to schedule a public hearing on July eighth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven PM to discuss the proposed amendment to the noise ordinance incorporating feedback from SH Acoustics.
Take a second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you all, thank you, chief, and thank you, Tessa as well.
Yeah, thank you guys for being on the line there. What?
I guess we'll move to the manager report.
Yes, well, don't we have, so, what do we? No? Oh, you have this in the report?
It was going to be part, but if you want to add it as.
No, why don't you talk, yeah, talk, yeah, talk about it.
Just jump.
Yes.
Okay. I'll just hit on a couple things before we get to.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
As a reminder, we touched on it earlier, but Thursday is Juneteenth, town offices will be closed, so we're closed on Thursday. We did have an employee recognition luncheon on June fifth, I want to thank Mayor Mark and, and Councilor Rosso for, for attending that, it was, it was a really good event, I want to thank our HR director and the what is the committee, the recognition committee, is that what it is, for putting that on, it was a really great event. So we want to, you know, thank our employees here, and that was good. I have some good news on, we've been, a goal is to get deed restrictions filed on, at the Mobile Home Park, so that they can count for affordable housing plan.
Oh, yeah.
We were able to, with with their attorney Jennifer, we were able to get for, the vacant properties were put on the land records today, so we're working on that, so progress is, is being made on that. And then, before we get into the HVAC, I do just want to point out, and, and I'm sure I don't know, representative, you know all about HB five oh oh two. And so, as a number of towns, I mentioned this to, to Mayor Mark earlier, a number of towns are requesting the governor to, to veto the bill, the proposed bill. It's currently on his desk, it passed, you know, both, both the House and Senate, and so it does have a few different items that would impact Berlin with housing. And so it has fair share housing mandates, which, which could be problematic for the town, because we, we wouldn't be setting those mandates, they would be, they would be given to us, and then in addition to that, Berlin would, because of the population, we would have to have a fair rent commission with this bill as well. There would be a ban on minimum parking requirements for this bill, with this bill, and conversion of commercial lots as of right, and then there's a, oh, and then eligibility for grants, so. Although Berlin, we wouldn't be impacted, because we do have a thriving TOD area in town, there's a lot of towns that don't have that, and they would be disenfranchised when it came to grants, like steep grants that small towns like Berlin rely on. So there's a number of things that are problematic with the bill, and so, so I don't know, it's up to you guys if you wanted, you know.
I did actually, if I can just be sent a letter to the mayor. I do have a lot of people in this community that are sending letters directly to the governor asking for him to veto this, not just this community, Southington as well, throughout the state of Connecticut. There's a lot of not-so-good stuff in there, I mean, we're almost at that ten percent threshold, which is really good for us, so they can see that we're moving forward in terms of affordable housing, we've worked very hard to get to that number. This is like pushing things even beyond, we just can't, you know, I spoke against the bill on the floor that evening, I mean, it's just not okay. Our community is the way our community is, you know, if we want to look at multifamily dwellings outside your window, next door to you, you can live in a city, okay? We live here in this community because we want the open space, so to speak. So I would encourage anybody that's watching this, whether online or in our audience, to write to the governor, he has some issues with it as well. You know, there's some of it that is probably okay, but there's a big portion of it that is not, so I don't know if he'll sign it, I hope that he vetoes it. We may have to go back to session in August as a result of this, to have changes, you know, taken out, put in, whatever they're going to do. So I don't know, I would suggest that we send a letter from our community as well to the governor expressing our concerns and asking for a veto.
I, I would, I would agree with that, from the council, yeah. It's quite the overreach into local affairs.
It really is.
Talk about assault on democracy.
That's.
This is a little bit.
Why we have our own zoning commission, I mean, that's their job to keep Berlin, you know, part of the historical and the town, and that, you know, we were a farming community, so you know, a lot of people come here because of that, and because of, like Donna was saying, the space and everything, so I think personally, you know, Berlin's doing a good job. So I would be in support of sending something to the governor, asking him to veto.
I did send a copy of that, you, and shared with mine, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's pretty much the same format.
Okay, just to be signed, signed by the council, what are we, what are we thinking, folks? Just to, you know.
Doesn't mean anything, but sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, he's going to do what he's going to do.
Send the letter, but.
Yeah, well, we get that, but.
I mean, it wasn't just Republicans that were against it, there were a lot of Democrats who were against it too.
No, no, I'm not saying it's political, but it's just, I, I don't care, fine. It's good.
Yes, man, let's send a letter.
Like you said, the governor's going to do what the governor's going to do, period.
Oh, we know that.
If you have a draft or something already done?
A copy to you.
Okay, I can.
That was one letter that I, that's circulating, and it does point out all the things that are negative in terms of a town like we have, a small town like Berlin.
So we're, we're a member of the Council of Small Towns, COS, and I'm on the board for that, they sent a letter.
Oh.
As well as CCM.
Oh, so pull out whatever of anything.
So it's not, it's, it's every, there's many, many.
Many different versions, and there's a lot of people that have some really big concerns with this, like, like you said, you know.
They should.
Can we see a copy of that, or?
Absolutely, yeah, before it goes out.
And though, you might have put something together and then send it to the council.
We got to do it as soon as possible.
Yes, yes, time's ticking.
We'll get you a draft tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll tell you, a form letter is the least effective way to.
Yeah.
Some of those things, it doesn't have to be a form letter, but.
Yeah, because put in a pile with the.
Nah, well, we get it, we get it.
Right. Yep.
Yeah.
Something together, you.
Appreciate it, Jeff could help out too, whatever you think should be in there.
And if you have thoughts to add to it.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know.
I mean, we worked so long and hard for our ten percent, and we're one of the few towns that have gotten there, you know, almost there, I mean.
Most.
One of the things you may want to think about pointing out is how this has become such a moving target. You know, the town, the town deployed a lot of resources in developing the affordability plan for the town, and the town has utilized a lot of staff hours and a lot of legal fees to navigate the ever-changing statutory and common law landscape in an effort to get to ten percent. So, you know, the idea that every single year, it's, the, the goalpost is going to get moved, how are you supposed to plan?
Yeah, there is.
You know, I mean, we, we've got, you know, plan of conservation, we've got, we have all these endeavors that we spend a lot of time, a lot of resources, and a lot of money on, and it doesn't seem to ever be a finished set of rules.
Goal keeps moving.
Right. And, you know, it is, it is very much a, a local issue, every community is somewhat different demographically, and, you know, some areas of the state developed at different periods of time, and you know, have well-established boundaries between business and residential areas, others don't. So, you know, trying to put a square peg in a round hole really doesn't accomplish the goal, which is a goal that everybody should agree with. But, you know, I think from a, from a legal perspective, it certainly has become a significant challenge year to year to be able to invest a lot of resources and pivot, and I see the land use agencies getting increasingly frustrated, and I worry that it's going to become more difficult to get good people to volunteer to serve on land use agencies when, you know, now there's mandatory training, and, you know, it's one thing to put people through training, but if the law's going to change every year, and they're going to need training every year, it's going to become even more difficult to get people to volunteer.
It needs one pages. In case anyone wants to read it.
Before bedtime, we go to sleep, or get, or get angry and can't sleep, one of the two.
Let it to the senate, let them read it. The senate should read it.
I was just, I was asking Kate if we should have a motion on that.
On the letter?
Oh, on the letter.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I mean, here's a consensus that you want to do. The only reason to do a motion would be if you wanted it to be in the form of a resolution.
No, I think it's a letter.
It's not a resolution, right?
Prepare a letter.
The letter would be.
Yeah. Okay, so we got that. Yes.
Yep.
Thank you all. All right, the next, and the last item I have is a discussion and, and update on the town's HVAC projects with both Hubbard and Griswold. Ministry of Schools.
Save the best for last, Ryan.
Yeah, and so. Our finance director is, is online as well as Mike O'Hern. Well, I don't know if you want to.
Mister Mike.
Talk about it, just.
Oh, come on up, Mike, come on.
We went out to bid on.
Come on down.
Projects and, and the. Projects and, and the, the, the Clifton version is Hubbard, uh, the bid, uh, we, we are, are right on, uh, the funding, but Griswold, we are short, uh, by quite a bit. And so there's a, there's a couple of options, but we're still working with the PBC. They, um, don't believe they have, uh, well, actually. Maybe we'll pause this. Hold on.
Pause a moment.
No, no, are we?
No, we're, we're good. So this is, uh, quite a miscalculation. Uh, what are we thinking? What, what happened, Mike?
Well, there, there were a few changes, but I didn't think that it added up to like, you know, a million bucks, you know, like. And I'll give you one example.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ordinance had an unanticipated effect on the chiller enclosures in the back. So, um, they had to put 12-foot-high acoustical block enclosures around the outside chillers. Cause the new, the noise ordinance was, came in after the design drawings were done. If you recall, I think the noise ordinance came in in July, but the design joint before then, but that didn't add up to
Okay, that.
that number. And I haven't done a post-mortem yet on cost estimate versus, uh, you know, the, the bids.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, it was a shock. So.
So we don't really know where we're off in terms of that estimate? I mean, what, what's making this happen?
I think it might've been the cost, cost estimating firm just didn't, I mean, the other, the other cost estimating firm was right on the money.
Yeah. Oh, it wasn't the same firm?
No, it was two different firms.
Oh, okay, okay. That's interesting. Yeah.
That's why. And that was the decision the PBC made to say, well, we're gonna spread the work around. We'll have, you know.
Yeah.
In retrospect, well, if we had chosen the wrong firm, we'd be really low. So, um.
Well, so what, 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 but, so you haven't really had a, a chance to?
Too busy trying to figure out what the, the PBC wants to do with these bids.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The spreadsheets have been flying around. Ryan knows they've been flying around. Kevin did a wonderful job of like.
Yeah.
Synthesizing all this information.
Yeah. That's here, right? Yeah. Yeah. I, we, I see that here. But so, well, so they don't know what they wanna do yet?
No, actually next week they're gonna have a special meeting.
Okay.
PBC.
Okay.
Today, we think we have an approach for both contractor bids. And there's one small bid, commissioning agent, which we're asking some questions about, but that's chump change. The, the big numbers are in the contractor's bid. So I think they're gonna be making recommendations next week, bring to July, your July eighth meeting.
Oh, okay.
And that'll be basically six bid awards that'll be coming your way.
Okay.
Two contractors, commissioning agent, um, construction manager, MEP and the architectural civil.
So, so.
There'll be a lot of work to do at July, on July eighth.
Oh, that's good. Um, great.
But we don't have funding.
Right now, we don't have enough funding for.
For Griswold.
For Griswold, yeah.
I mean, so would, would they're looking into this and you looking into this, this number would not change going down? I mean, or no, we don't really know? Cause it doesn't sound, we don't even know.
Bids were very tight, both. So it wasn't like there was a low ball or, I mean, it was higher. It was both, both, uh, bidders for Griswold were right in the neighborhood. So to me, that's, that speaks to, it was a reasonable bid result for both. So, I mean, we can, we will, we'll, if you want, what I'll do is I'll look, I'll, and I'll talk to Tom Reed, the chairman. He's, you know, a numbers guy.
Yeah.
Take a look and see if we can figure out why.
Yeah.
Go back to the estimation firm, the estimator firm.
Hmm.
But we're running out of time as far as, um, you know, it's not gonna change the results, unfortunately.
Mayor, may, if I may.
Yes, please.
The idea too, is if for some reason, for some kind of savings.
Yeah.
Your public hearing and your town meeting are ballpark maybe high. But it's better to advertise it for a higher figure than a lower figure because that causes more problems. So you want to go with what the fig, the best that you have right now. And if for some strange reason, you can save something.
Right.
You can cut it during the either town meeting or the public hearing.
Okay.
And Kevin's on here too, but.
Yeah, yeah. Cause Kate's talking about the, the proposed, um.
Yes.
Motion that, that's before you. So basically in order, if, if PBC does their work and is ready, uh, and sends everything to the council, we would need to modify the existing bond ordinance, uh, and, and with that, hold a public hearing and, and a town meeting on July eighth in order to award, uh, the, the Griswold.
Can we take a million bucks out of the fund balance? That are doing the $6 million bond?
Well, Kevin's here because we need a little bit of, a little bit of balls to, to fall below, um, to not have an automatic referendum.
Right.
And so, so we can't, so we're, the, the real problem is, is Mike pointed out is that we're up against the clock where we don't wanna lose the grant funds, well, you know, on the school. And so the grant, the project needs to be, I think the wording is substantially completed by this December. We can get a one-year extension on that most likely, but the project needs to be underway.
Right.
It's not underway, uh, we risk losing, losing the grant award. And so that, that would not be good. And so, uh, so I'll turn it over to Kevin's here. Kevin, you have anything to add on that?
Oh, so we're already taking a million out.
Yeah.
Of fund balance. Is that it, Kevin?
It, it is. Um, you kinda have two features here. Ryan talked about the grant. The, the grant timing is, is critical and why we need to, to move along. The other piece is the charter and the automatic referendum. So going back to the timing one, if we have to go to, if we trigger the automatic referendum, that would happen in November and that would significantly delay even the ability to award the contract. We just don't have an appropriation for Griswold that's sufficient to even award the contract today for construction. So in an effort to move this along, bond counsel and the town attorney, both, we, we discussed the charter and how it is written. And the charter requires that we go to an automatic referendum if the town intends to borrow more than $5 million. Now, under that heading is grants. So the grants reduce your borrowing capacity. So it's really bonding slash grants. So the intent here is to actually approve a revised or amended ordinance, raising the authorization to $6 million. However, motioning that, or putting in place that the bonding, and again, bonding plus grant, is authorized up to $5 million. That would then not trigger the automatic referendum, allow you to move forward. What that does require, and that's where the last line of the proposed ordinances would be using local funds. In this instance, if you look at the spreadsheet right now, we're saying just shy of $400,000 in excess of the $5 million would be needed. The Public Building Commission is going to be reviewing this between now and your next meeting. So the intent here was to put high numbers out. The $6 million is substantially higher than what we're looking at today. And it would require a million dollars of fund balance to be appropriated, again, knowing those are high. So that between now and your next meeting, Public Building Commission can do their work, can define what that number should be, and then you could modify or you could approve what we all hope and, and expect would be a lower number for both the top ordinance, the $6 million would come down and therefore the fund balance would come down. But as, as Kate mentioned, we wanna notice the higher number and then come in lower. So we're trying to run the funding in parallel with what the Public Building Commission is doing so that the timing would work out. And the last thing I'll say, and then I'll stop with all the numbers is once the ordinance is finally approved by both the council and the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance will also be meeting on the eighth, so presumably you would approve it and then they would approve it the same night. Kate will then have to notice this and allow 14 days for the public to, uh, weigh in. Although it won't trigger an automatic referendum, this funding doesn't prevent someone from forcing a, a referendum if they, if someone were to choose to do that. So you have a 14-day notice. So even with this expedited timing, and if all falls into place, you're still looking late July before you can actually award the Griswold contract. So the goal would be to try to get this approved on the eighth so that we could get, if not on, at least really close to your last meeting in July to award the contract and potentially start doing some work in the summer. That's where I step out and Mike and, and the PBC come in and figure out the actual logistics once we awarded of the contract. But we're really running up against a window because as you shrink the time between now and December 2026, which assumes a one-year extension from the state, the only way you can, can complete a project that's assumed to take 18 months to be substantially complete and do it in less time is to work more during the period you have, second shift, double shifts, weekends, which escalate your price right there. So the longer we take, the more risk you have of those higher cost elements of running the project and still hitting that December 2026 revised deadline from the state.
With all that, we're short of books too. I didn't even talk about that. Um, so but, so the initial estimates, who, like, how did we get the initial? I mean, I know what we gotta do. I'm sure we, we gotta do what we gotta do, but what, the initial estimates were so far, like, where'd the initial estimates come?
Just one estimate. It was the Griswold estimate. It was by, um, Key's Group.
But, but that, but that was lower.
That was lower, yeah.
And then this one now is by?
No, no, there were two, um, two estimators. One did each school.
Yes, right.
PBC retained them to do the estimates.
Okay. But then now with the bid, the bid went out.
Yeah.
And it came in to be this much more.
Much higher than the estimator. And we actually heard, um, Bluefield, who's the, the CM on the job, they just did a bid, I think a five-school bid at Norwalk. They had sticker shock as well. So for some reason, it's, I don't know what's going on right now, but it's not just to Berlin. So they had to actually kick a school out or whatever. They had five schools. So I don't know if that's what happened here. But yeah, we have to, I have to figure out why it was three million versus over four million for the bid.
Well, cause I was gonna say, if you have, you know, you're putting in an estimate of 3.2 million and then you come back and say, oh, I was 2.1 million off.
All right.
Don't understand.
No, the 2.1 million includes cushion. So.
It's still off by a.
That's a significant figure.
Point four still.
It's still a big, yeah, it's still a significant, yeah.
Oh, of course it is.
Hopefully we won't use that estimator company again, to be honest with you. Good. Cause I wouldn't recommend them being that far off.
No.
Something's not, something's not right.
I mean, and I get what you say about the cornerstone fence, but I'm looking at that. That was the one at Hubbard, right? Talking about, or is that?
Grizzle? Is it?
Was that separate?
It's, it is at Hubbard.
Oh, at Hubbard?
Different, okay.
That's proposed. So that's, that's, that's part of what they bid on. So it's extra work. And there's a lot of contingency in, um, their bids. There was a number of allowances that are put in there. So this contingency already baked into these numbers on the order of like $300,000. So it's not, if you're looking at, you know, hard costs without allowances and contingency, it's around the 1.1 million dollar, uh, you know, sort of delta between the estimate. And I don't wanna get too complicated with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. A million bucks plus is a big shock.
Yes.
Kevin has tried to figure a way out that we can get work started this summer with both schools.
Gotcha. Okay. So this is what it is, I guess. But so what, what, what do we, what do we have to do tonight?
You have to add, drink the motion.
Add the motion? Yeah, I don't see any other way, obviously. You don't really wanna go to a referendum.
That's just to set the public hearing, right?
We should go to a referendum. Let people decide. Huh? You know what? You know what happened with the referendum?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
So I, I moved to add item number 12 to our agenda. Set a public hearing and, uh, call a town meeting.
Okay, second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, it's so hard to, uh.
Just one thing to add to your motion, Charlie. Just add what it's for, cause you're just saying add a meeting and this here, just be a little bit more specific, please.
You wanted to say for an HVAC?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Just so, just so it's in there so it could be documented as to what the special meeting is for, just not to add a special meeting.
I mean, uh, I mean, I don't know, the voters have their say, I guess, right? I don't know. Sometimes that's what referendums are for, right? With that kinda money. Let the town decide if they wanna spend it.
The only thing I'll add to that.
Yes.
Mayor is.
Yes.
What Kevin pointed out, just the timing, the referendum wouldn't be until November and.
Yeah, I know, we'll lose the grants.
I mean, the, uh, the bids would need to be awarded.
Yeah, no, that's the problem.
It would be difficult to even, like, as Kevin said, award the bids by the end of the year. And so, uh, it just, uh, uh, an 18-month, just.
I can't see anybody pulling a petition for this. It's not gonna happen.
But to what? Oh, to.
A referendum.
Oh. No. Yeah. What's that?
Honestly, it comes down to the fact that the schools need to have the work done.
Yeah.
I, I'm not thrilled about.
Yeah, I know.
How the process went.
Do you see a way out of this?
No.
All the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's always a way out, but it's a way out we don't, we don't wanna go to, of course, right?
Yeah.
Or.
Yes.
I don't know. So for the public hearing, the town meeting, you know, the HVAC upgrade to, um, Mary E. Griswold Elementary School. That's just to add it to the agenda.
Yes. All those in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yep. Any opposed? Alright, so moved. And now take a vote.
You ready for the motion, right?
Yes. Yes.
Move to set a public hearing on Tuesday, July eighth, 2025 at 7:00 PM to amend and an ordinance appropriating $3,200,000 for HVAC upgrades to the Mary E. Griswold Elementary School 2023 and authorizing issuance of $3,200,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending issuance thereof, making of temporary borrowing for such purpose to an ordinance appropriating $6 million for HVAC upgrades to Mary E. Griswold Elementary School 2023 and authorizing the issuance of $5 million bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, pending the issuance thereof, making temporary borrowings for such purpose and authorizing the use of town funds to fund the balance of the appropriation. Vote on that and then.
Vote on that first.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, any other comments or questions on that? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Number two.
Move to call a special town meeting on Tuesday, July eighth, 2025 at 6:45 PM to approve a non-budget appropriation of $1 million from the general fund, unassigned fund balance for the HVAC upgrades to Mary E. Griswold Elementary School 2023 fund account.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin and Mike, too.
Always good to end on a happy note.
And that's it for my management.
That's enough, Ryan. That's enough. Not your fault, but that's enough. Alright, thank, thank you. Special committee reports, uh, we didn't have, right? There wasn't any, right? No. Council Communications, folks, what do you got?
Well, uh.
Who wants to go?
Well, if I didn't say something, it wouldn't be right.
It's got, you gotta say it. What are you gonna say, Mark? Let me.
We decided, uh, you know, we've talked before, uh, the last couple of meetings about moving forward and getting a committee together about the town charter.
Yes.
And when would we start taking the appropriate action to start the process as far as rewriting the town charter and looking at things to move forward with that?
I think next year. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't just don't see it. Get, it, it, we got a short window to get. I mean, we, we'd never make it to the November election.
No, we wouldn't make it to that, but.
So I don't even know why.
I mean, I know it's a process, but I mean, we need to start the process. We just can't keep talking about it.
Well, I mean, Kate, you, you would.
So you were sent the, um, calendar that I.
Yep, I saw that.
Last year, uh, uh, in 2016. They all blend after a while. So it gives you a timeframe. That was a very, very tight timeframe.
Okay.
But I think it came out that, um, it was talked about in, at a May meeting. And that kinda like pushed it because we were trying to get it on for the November ballot. So if you came up with it possibly either late fall, early January, February, I would really encourage that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Then we can, then I can develop a calendar for you at that point and go forward. I think the biggest thing that you have to consider is how big do you want the committee and who's gonna serve on it? And I'm sorry, Peter, you had to.
No, I'm just wondering if we need to put money in for expenses for that.
Of course you do. So. Of course you do, so.
Waste money.
Oh, bond some more money. Bond some more money, what's the difference?
I mean, for secretarial and, and that stuff.
And some of it, it, you know, it is, we'll have to do the secretary, yes, you're totally right, and thank you for bringing that up. And some of it might cross over into the next budget because then, um, so the other things that have to be done, of course, is notice of the public hearings and then also, if it is adopted as far as the, um, it has to be a legal notice. You know, so there's, there's a lot that goes into it.
Yeah.
How much money do we estimate we would need? Do we, do we have a rough estimate? What did we do last, I don't remember last?
I think it was about 30.
30K?
3,000, 3,300.
3,300.
A lot.
Oh.
Um, but it depends upon.
Ah, 3,300, 6 million, what's the difference? It's okay.
You have to have the, um, secretary, it's paid by the hour.
Right. I remember that, yeah.
And, um, you know, when, when they did the massive, um, update in 2016, those meetings went until 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
The one that we did a couple of years ago, that was a little bit more controlled where it wasn't so late.
Right.
But it, it all, you know, unfortunately too, it is becoming more and more expensive with these legal, legal notices.
How about if we have to hire legal representation?
What?
Legal representation? Because I know our town attorney isn't the attorney for the Charter Revision Commission, right?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, he is. He would be.
The way we did it last time was we hired Steve Mednick to represent the Charter Revision Commission and I represented the town, we were both at all the meetings.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And the first charter, Jeff, you didn't.
2016.
2016, you didn't, you didn't, you weren't involved in that because you were just getting hired, right?
No, I wasn't involved in it.
Yes. 2016, and then the other one was, uh, three years ago was the other one, three?
And like about 2020.
22.
2022, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
The council appoints the members, right?
Yes.
We might have some new counselors in November, so do we want to wait, appoint the commission? Since we're going to have the time lag and miss, miss this.
Let me know how bad it gets, I might have the town clerk.
What, what's that? What's up, Kate? What, what's the matter?
I'm not leaving for a few years.
You're like, yeah, no, you're not going anywhere, we won't let you. We'll lock you in your office, you're not going anywhere. Yeah, so later, we'll talk about it. I mean, it's.
I don't think it should be forgotten, so thank you.
Oh, no, we're not forgetting it.
I just want to make, I just want to make mention.
We are not forgetting it, we're not going through this again with the election. No.
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 No, not at all.
No, yeah.